Okay, thank you. So again, welcome to members of council, staff and the public. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declaration of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof? Seeing none, accepting the agenda. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Massey that the township of the county... Sorry, Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, June the 23rd, 2025.
Any discussion on the agenda? Any additions or deletions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Adoption of the previous minutes, regular meeting council minutes, Monday, May 26, 2025. Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Cadell, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council minutes, Monday, May 26, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, there are no delegations this evening. Staff reports, the admin department, AD 2025-04. Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Manley. Council receives staff report, AD 2024-04, Municipal Housing Infrastructure Program, Health and Safety Water Stream, and that council authorizes the CAO/ Clerk to apply for the MHIP Health and Safety Water Stream Grant for the Gary River Integrated Water Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Resilience Project.
Okay, thank you. And just it's, we'll have to do it as amended. It's AD, should not be 2025, so it'll be as amended. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So earlier in 2025, the province announced the second intake for the municipal housing infrastructure program, and this time it was for health and safety water stream. So this was substantially different than the first round of these different funding programs where the first, the first bit was for housing growth. So that was the stream that we received through the province for the lagoon, and that had to be directly tied to housing units. So you had to be able to take your projects of the lagoon and divide it by the amount of houses that you could build as a result of doing that project. This stream is more focused on maintaining the infrastructure you have to support the current housing units that you have. So I think what the provincial government heard from some municipalities was, yes, we're interested in growth, but we also need to maintain the infrastructure we have for the housing units that we have as well, and it may not be directly tied to any growth. So we did a review of our projects here at the township, and because the public works department right now is very focused on the lagoon and other projects, we looked outside of that, and it sort of corresponded very quickly or easily with a meeting that I had scheduled with Raisin River Conservation Authority. Because as council is aware, and we did do a scenario in emergency management when it came to the dam at Mill Pond, and we haven't had, we have had issues there with the water flow and everything, as well as other things to do with the Gary River system. I met with RRCH to just go over the system. We do own the dams along the Gary River, and we have a contract with RRCA for the maintenance for those dams. We've also talked around this table as well as at the Rural Committee and other emergency management committee as well, about the channel that runs to the east of Mill Pond and underneath, actually, the Highway 34, the main street. And this has been a conversation we've had with the county as well as other organizations around the flooding that occurs down there and exactly who owns it and what, who has to maintain that. So we've spoken about all those different types of projects. And so when I met with RRCA to discuss the Gary River system and source water protection, all those things, this grant then came up in the conversation, and they were very interested. They have applied for grants in the past on our behalf to look at engineering and design and things like that along some of these systems, but they have not been successful themselves. So when this came up, we saw it as an opportunity, as a project that is definitely on our radar. It's been something we've spoken about along the table in the last seven years I've been here, and certainly this fits really well into this grant. So it is for critical health and safety issues, which this is. It is, as council is well aware, Mill Pond and the Gary River system is the source water for not only Alexandria but also Maxville. So it's important that we have control and, you know, understand exactly how that system works through the Gary River, through the dam system, as well as then the risk and the flooding to the east of Highway 34 and from Mill Pond. And I know from just walking around town this year with the, the water is very high, and I did call Allison about the dam because the water was flowing through the North Glengarry Restaurant very quickly. And so it's been something that's been on their radar. And so we're well, well beyond any, you know, timelines around, you know, anything else we have on the books. So this was something that really came to light as a good opportunity. So council can see that what we're proposing is different types of studies. So we need to do some dam safety assessments on the three different dams, and then also some structural assessments along the channel. And then from there, looking at the upgrades in the channel design, what, what exactly we want to do with that? And we've spoken about that here at council. We had Raisin River, I think, come a couple, maybe last year, and do a little presentation on that as well. So exactly what needs to be done there? You know, does it, you know, what exactly type of structure is it? You know, what's the history of that? And then how can we work with the property owners along that? And I know Jacob and I have looked at, there is a mix of different ownership along the canal as well. So from that, we'd then look at what something they, they say is channelization. So what that would be, that's an anomaly when it comes to the project. So we're not exactly sure what that would look like at this time. So along the channel design and the assessments would be, what exactly do we need to do along there? Is there some, you know, parts that are structurally okay? Is there parts that need to be fixed? And then is there, you know, more to be done along that, that project? So the total of the project is $2 million. And speaking to the treasurer and the director of Public Works, we do feel we can find our portion of the, of the project, which is 73% of the cost, I think it's around, we're looking at $250,000 per year for a couple of years. There is room within the capital budget with some room that we found in Public Works. That amount of $2 million could be less, depending on what we find with some of the studies. It also doesn't mean that we have to do all the work necessarily, depending on where it comes in. But we, in speaking to Allison last week, we did want to present the project as it sits. I think the, the most important part of the project at the beginning is actually the assessments and then design. So if the, we're not successful in getting the grant, my, my proposal for the 2026, 27 budget would be that we start to, to do some of those, those projects anyway, and then kind of plan for that over time. But I think this is a great opportunity for us to get that 73% of the costs, and I think it's a very different project. I know Allison and RRCA are so excited, like Phil and Jonathan that I've been working with, really excited about the project. I'm excited, I know the Rural Committee was also excited to, when we talked about it to them as well. So this is what we're proposing for this section of the Housing Enabling Water Fund Grant.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to say, we've had the meetings with Conservation Authority, and we all sort of scratched our head as to where the dollars were going to come from. So I'm going to say, very good attempt, at least, to, to get us going on it. And we know that we've got to maintain these things. We know that we have some degradation, so ideally, they agree with us and we can move forward with everything.
Okay, go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this sounds like a great opportunity, and, I mean, we know that when the Alexandria Main Street project gets done anyway, I think there was going to be some required work there anyway, so, you know, that could probably dovetail nicely. This weekend, when we were at that meeting for the 138, Allison McDonald was there, and she was telling me a little bit about this. And so I, I spoke to her about the, the park plan that was done some years ago, but we have, we never really kind of did anything with it, but part of that park plan involved trying to create access and connection from Island Park across the pond, going north to, to the mill, to the pre smell.
Coming down Park Street and down...
Along the water.
Yes.
Along the water, and that, if that dam could accommodate pedestrians, it, it, it could make, could make that connection from that piece of property we own right behind Pre Smell.
Yes.
You could cross at the dam, which would actually be a, probably a, a good view, nice of the falls anyway, and then in the future, potentially, you know, onto a walkway that would bring you, a boardwalk which would bring you to Island Park. So I, you know, I mentioned that to Allison, and I said, that probably should be considered at the same time, so that if, if some adjustments can be made in the dam to make it traversable, we should do it.
And then through you, Mr. Mayor, so when we met with RRCA, that was part of the conversation, Deputy Mayor, that was that idea as well. And then also along the 34, what Allison's seeing is, because we were talking about different options for the channel, whether or not it becomes like a storm sewer or whatnot, but she, what she's seeing at the Conservation Authorities is actually the opposite, where they're starting to unearth in cities these waterways which are underneath. And so we talked about the 34 and maybe the opportunity to, when they do that project to, to show, because when you drive over, you don't realize you're going over that. Unless you go out and walk like I do the town or are driving around town, you don't realize there's this really neat canal within the town that we've spent some money on as well for the bridges. So I think there's a good opportunity to kind of expand the project, and I did mention, Stephanie and I have talked about that park plan and that, that egress through there, so it's something that we can definitely look at.
Good. Councilor Massey.
Yeah, very good project. I didn't know that you, I didn't bring my package till today, so I'm very happy about that. When I was here Thursday, I showed a video, I think, to a few of member, council members from the underneath of the 34, and it's, doesn't look too good. And then, and I'm sure if we don't, like, it's, hopefully we get it, but like, to redo the old channelization or the channel, like, the stonework and everything like that, that, if we don't, not successful here, we should look into maybe another grant from the feds, maybe, to look at historical, because that, like, we can know when was that built, but it's probably 200 years old, I would imagine. It's when they built the mill and everything. So, yeah, and the dam, as I sit down the Raisin River, I've been mentioning that channel a few years now, and even the dam, I think it's getting degraded too, so it's, yeah, so we need to do something, even though we, we don't get the grant, we need to look at it. Good job.
Thank you. Any further questions, or, Councilor Cadell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thinking the same thing about the stonework around the grotto, if that will be included as a referral.
Yes. Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Joe.
Any further questions or comments? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you. Community Services Department, CS 2025-12, North Glengarry Evening of Excellence. Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Manley. The Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, CS 2025-12, North Glengarry Evening of Excellence, for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. And our economic development officer, Ainsley, will give us an update on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following discussions with Community Development Committee earlier this month, staff have developed a plan to rebrand our former Business and Community Awards into the North Glengarry Evening of Excellence. So while the event will still include an awards component to celebrate the great work of local individuals, groups and businesses, staff are pleased to introduce a new portion of the event, which will be dedicated to showcasing the growth and development of the township over the past year. The event will now include a presentation that highlights recent years, or the recent years' progress, including new businesses that have opened, new developments to the area, upgrades at major venues, funding success stories and other relevant economic development updates. The newly rebranded event with its associated logo, as seen on the screen, has been coined with the tagline, "Celebrating Success and Showcasing Growth," to attract the new attendees to the event, to hear about the success within North Glengarry and learn how the township continues to evolve. Staff have also modernized the nomination process for the 2025 event. The nomination process, which will open on June 25th, will now enable members of the public to submit their nominations directly on the township website through our forms feature. Hard copy forms will still be made available at the township website or for printing off the website, and you can email them to myself or Stephanie. Similar to the 2024 event, the Evening of Excellence will continue to feature eight award categories, but six will be returning from previous years, while two new award categories have been developed for the event. One of the categories is the North Glengarry Leader Under 40 Award, to celebrate the outstanding achievements of young leaders who are making a meaningful impact in North Glengarry. The other is the Champion of Culture and Heritage Award, which is an award for an individual or group that has demonstrated a focus on preserving and celebrating heritage, fostering community pride and encouraging conservation, highlighting the richness and, yeah, highlighting the riches in local history and culture. By implementing new awards, staff are hoping to target a different segment of the population in order to recognize the varying contributions towards the growth and development in North Glengarry. The event has been scheduled to occur on Thursday, September 25th, at the Glengarry Sports Palace. Glengarry Sports Palace and staff are looking forward to continuing to plan and promote this newly rebranded event.
Okay. Thank you, Ainsley. Any questions or comments at this time? Go ahead, Councilor Massey.
Yeah, very good idea. The new concept, just the, the crest, I have a problem. Could we, could we not get that bilingual?
Sure.
Because both, or the founder of Alexandria were French too.
Agreed.
And then maybe, remember when we had that little thistle on our whole thing there? What's that? Is that a grain?
Wheat.
Maybe replace that with the thistle and a little furbity? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we can put one of them in the wall.
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, because right now, apart from that, it's excellent. Nice to see a new...
Councilor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that we had this, and we canceled it for the Meet Me on Main Street thing, that was where the money came from, and I just wondered if, this is a great idea, essential, I think, and, but are we going to maybe cut back on the, maybe on Main Street, maybe limit it to events that are on the Main Street, rather than, you know, kind of funding little parties here and there, you know, that, that money could go towards this?
I think that can definitely be a discussion at budget time and how we budget for these things on a go-forward basis, but, yeah, definitely, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we can also look at the price of the ticket, Councilor Cadell, as well, to look at maybe recovering a little bit more money for people who are attending. It could be an option as well.
Go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I think this is great. It's, it's nice to get a refresh and kind of modernize it a little bit, for sure. My only concern is that adding more substance to the evening is going to make it longer. And I'm assuming you discussed that at your meeting, because we already have a hard time keeping it, the length of time in, in check, and so definitely make for a longer event.
I, I think that we're, you know, we're talking about that, you know, the evening is about these people, but, you know, it'll be, we're, we're giving a full description of what they do, from, you know, the members of council that get up and, and talk about them, but shorter, much shorter speeches.
Much shorter?
Yeah. You know, basically to come up and just say thank you, and, you know, maybe a minute, minute and a half or something.
Minute and a half, huh?
Well, it's, I will have Councilor Massey beside me, and...
I will cut my time down. Okay, any further question? Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Just to reiterate, and by the way, welcome to council, the, the logo with those changes, I think, will look really good, and the two new categories, I think, are a good idea just in terms of moving this forward, modernizing a little bit, and, and recognizing some people that otherwise are not. So I think it's, all around, I think it's a good call.
Okay. Everyone else? All good? Yes, go ahead.
Maybe, thank you, Mr. Mayor, maybe make a post on Facebook. I know you're going to have it on the website, but it's always handy to...
Okay. Call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Their motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Ainsley. Treasury Department, TR 2025-11, Community Services Transfers from Reserves. Councilor Manley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, TR 2025-11, Community Services Transfer from Reserves, and the council approves the transfer of $13,500 from the CEMC Contingency Fund for the installation of a generator at the Glengarry Sports Palace, and the council approves the transfer of $43,000 from the facilities reserve for the installation of two tankless water heaters for the Glengarry Sports Palace.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two projects requiring additional funding were encountered by the Community Services Department. The first was the installation cost for the natural gas generator at the GSP. The township received funding for the project, however, the final installation was not completed. Staff received pricing from Enbridge, however, the installation was cost prohibitive and nothing further was done. Staff worked with local contractors and determined another method of installation, which Enbridge has since approved. Staff are requesting $13,500 be transferred from the CEMC contingency fund to pay for it. The generator was installed to equip the GSP in the case of an emergency by offering a fully accessible space. The second request is for $43,000 from the facilities reserve. Staff recently discovered that the water heaters were at the end of their life and required immediate detention. The Director of Community Services and Lead Hand investigated the options and determined that a tankless system was the most cost-effective option available. Both reserves have sufficient space for these items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councilor Madden.
Just going to say, good call on the tankless.
Yeah.
Especially considering we have a facility that sits empty for a huge period of time when hot water's not being used, so we're heating that for no reason. And longevity-wise as well, will be beneficial. I'm, I'm, I don't remember if we knew that the generator hadn't been completed. But anyway, it doesn't really matter, it's just a little strange to me that we had an additional cost on this to connect it, because I thought we had full funding on that one. But regardless, it's obviously got to happen. Do you want to try and give her a second to maybe answer that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It seems that their previous Director of Community Services had been looking into it, however, because of the cost from Enbridge, they had stopped for whatever reason, and then when the new director came on board, it was something they continued with. And unfortunately, the grant didn't cover the full project, but the generator's not especially useful without the connection.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to Treasury Department, two, DR 2025-02, Award of the RFP, DR 2025-01, Abandonment of the McGilvery-McLeod Drain-McRae Branch. Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives report, DR 2025-02, Award of RFP, DR 2025-01, Abandonment of the McGilvery-McLeod Drain-McRae Branch. The council authorizes the mayor and CAO to enter into an agreement with Robinson Consultants in the amount of $5,228 plus HST.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The township of North Glengarry started the process to abandon the McRae branch of the McGilvery-McLeod municipal drain in 2023. As part of the process, a neighboring land owner requested an engineer's report. Staff prepared an RFP, however, only one submission was received from Robinson Consultants in the amount of $5,228 plus HST. Staff recommend the award of the project to Robinson as it meets the criteria for the work required.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So what exactly does it mean, like, the abandonment of the drain? Is that just the final step to complete the drain?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No. At this stage, we've presented the abandonment, however, there's another land owner who is not in agreement. So before we can move forward with actually abandoning the drain, we need an engineer to review the situation first and determine and make a recommendation. So the engineer, once he has done his evaluation, will come to council and make a full report on whether or not it's feasible and what they believe should be done.
Further questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Madden.
Just to continue on that, so we abandoned this, we're no longer in, responsible for maintaining this, it becomes the landowner's sole responsibility?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly. So once it's no longer municipal, if it's abandoned, it will no longer be a municipal responsibility.
Okay, and just wanted to follow up. The cost on this, out of curiosity, is it purely borne by us, or is it like other drain work where it's assessed to the landowners?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This one is an interesting situation. So the engineer will determine who pays the cost, however, because we initiated the abandonment, the township will most likely pay a portion, however, the requesting landowner could also be assessed a portion if the engineer determines that there is nothing wrong with the abandonment. So it'll be largely dependent on what the engineer finds.
Okay, good, thanks. Perfect. Go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Is this the same, is this the same company that we're using to do our drainage work or whatever?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we felt that might be a conflict of interest, so they did not bid, and this way, if the township requires support, we'll still have the support from our drainage engineer.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay. Thank you, Zoe. Moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, BP 2025-15, Bylaw Number 182025, Stop Up, Close and Sell Road Allowance. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number BP 2025-15, Bylaw Number 182025, Stop Up and Sell Road Allowance, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the proposal and passes the bylaw number 20, number 182025, for stopping up and closing and selling a portion of the road allowance between Kenyon Concession 14 Indian Lands and Kenyon Concession 15 Indian Lands, Lot 2, 3 and 4, lying east of 14R300 in North Glengarry, also known as 18408 Kenyon Concession Road 15 Indian Lands, Maxville, owned by Bordeaux and Valence Ag Inc., and that bylaw 182025 be read first, second and third time and enacted in open council this 23rd of June 2025.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I presented this file at the last public meeting. It was basically to stop up and close only that section of the road allowance that basically runs right across the Bordeaux and Valence's property. I showed a picture, it goes like between the office and the house. It abuts on, on their land as well, on the east, and on the west, it's heavily treed, so, anyway, they, they wish to acquire that portion of the road allowance to develop the farm, and the new building will be right where the road allowance is. So basically, they came to us to acquire this portion of the land. As you can see in my little 127, step-by-step there for these things, we're pretty much at, at the end, so I advertised to all adjacent neighbors, in this case, it wasn't too complicated as it's the same farm all around, which is the purpose of only acquiring this portion there. It was also advertised to agencies, and we have received no comments or concern, so at this point, council could, would pass that bylaw, they would take this, council, township will have no financial implications. So if a survey is required, in this case, I don't think it will be, because it's described with, with legal words already, so they will take, bring that to their lawyer, he will write up the, the wording, send it back for the CAO to sign, and they will own the portion. So as you know, it's also crossing the... So as you know, it's also crossing their airstrip, so in this case, it is recommended that it's being acquired by them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did we put any value in that piece of land or?
No, in this case, there was no actual value for the township, especially because it, it ends on their property as well. It runs across the airfield, so there's already, there, like, I'm not too sure about the history of, of what went where, but there's already an issue with the runway running across, like there, it can't be like that, that you can't have a public roadway in the middle of an airstrip. They own the airstrip, it was like, it's all done at federal level, but they were permitted to put the land, so at some point, the township gave their go-ahead to put that there. So there are some, so that's why there's no actual money value to this land.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, PW 2025, Award of Roland Massey Crossing Grade Upgrades. And that is Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives report PW 2025-15, Award of Contract, Roland Massey Crossing Approach Modifications, and the council authorizes the mayor and CAO to enter into an agreement with Cornwall Gravel to supply the labor and materials to construct the Roland Massey Crossing Approach Modifications for fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents plus HST.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this has been a very long time coming, I think I started working on this project in 2022. So we got a grant from the RSIP, which is the Rail Safety Improvement Fund, and a lot of this work has already been completed by via rail, the main, along the main guideway. And so now we're just correcting the grade at either side of the approach to Roland Massey, so we don't get a ice buildup there. We got a very good price from Cornwall Gravel. Our total grant amount for this portion of the work is a hundred and seven thousand. There's going to be more costs just for flagging, bringing in the safety guys, there's some engineering work to be done as well, but we're very happy with the price and will be under budget, we believe, at this point.
Okay, good news. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it just this one? Do we have another one that we got to do?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of grade crossings for North Glengarry, especially because we've got that north-south line as well.
Yep.
This is the only one that we've made a commitment to any rail authority to do. But there will be, you know, we're currently working on the asset management plan, and there'll be other grade crossings. We do have an obligation to maintain them, and it's something that has been kind of catching public works directors as they come up in the past, so we're going to have a bit more of a cohesive plan going forward to attack these things.
Okay, good, thanks.
Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
I know we do have a lot of rails crossing, but I, it's funny that we bear the expense on, on these crossings, when if the track wasn't there, we wouldn't have to pay all these, like, this should be funded by the rail company.
I can give you the phone numbers, so that they can never phone you back.
Okay, yeah, it's just that it.
And that's what they do, they never phone you back.
It's a lot of money, and I know we have a lot of crossing, and it's, it's, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to number two, PW 2025-16, Award of Sewer Lining Tender 2025. Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kaddal, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives report PW 2025-16, Award of Contract, Sewer Lining 2025, and that council authorizes the mayor and CAO clerk to enter into an agreement with Clearwater Municipal Services, Inc., to supply the labor and materials for the installation of cured-in-place pipe, CIPP, at designated locations for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars seventy-one cents plus HST.
Thank you, Counselor. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we got a very competitive price from Clearwater. We haven't worked with them before, but they have good, very good references. This work with, is again along the Gary River, like we have been doing in, in previous years. We think this is the best place to target, to stop the infiltration into the lagoon. And this section really should close up that, that main section there. There is one more that hasn't been lined, and it's an interesting section, because we, we camered it previously and it didn't seem so bad. We lined sections further up, and we, we're curious if lining those sections further up has caused us more pressure downstream, which has caused these ones to fail. Just a, just a theory, but it's really hard to know, but once you do line them, they're bulletproof and, and last for a long time, so we, we want to go and hit this section, and hopefully it doesn't cause the next. The good news is, the only last section down there is, is a lot shorter than this, so this should hopefully be the end of, of our lining along the, along the Gary River.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, just a little off-topic, but do we do culvert linings at all? I know that we just passed a resolution at the, at the counties and nobody ponied on to that tender. So do we do that?
Yes, we do. So we, we're not doing any this year. Culvert linings are, there are roads, stormwater improvement, they're very beneficial if you are trying to keep an asphalt surface intact. We're actually really good at our township, and we tend to go and replace all the culverts just before we pave. So, you know, and our, our structures, the county has a really good road system, and they've got really expensive, thick pavement, so it's very cost-effective for them to line. It also depends on the size of the culvert. Our roads have been in poorer condition, and we're, we're running this program to really go and revamp them. So at the moment, it's been the, the cheapest thing to rip it up, replace the culvert completely, and then just like one year ahead of our roads program. As we get a better roads program going, once we finish that ten-year and we start to, to drop back our capital cost, it might actually increase our culvert cost slightly, because we'll need to, we'll, we'll have some culverts that'll start failing before our road is found, and we'll want to go and line them. So it's a great, great program, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on, go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's done this for us in the past, Tim? I remember, I mean, I've watched it happen, I just don't remember the name of the business, and I'm curious why they might not have bid.
Clean Water Works and Sewer Tech. Clean Water Works was just full.
Okay.
Sewer Tech, I think, got bought, I believe. They, these companies, this may be just in my opinion, but I, I feel like these companies buy each other all the time, and so I lose track, but Clean Water Works was the one who had been giving us some really good pricing and some really good work over the last few years. We tended this a little bit later than we normally do.
Okay.
So I think they just got busy somewhere else, and these guys put in a good bid, very good references, so, and a good competitive price.
Yeah, they've been around, well, you see them all over the place. I'm, I'm just really amazed at the price from GFL versus Clearwater. Glad they Clearwater bid.
Go ahead.
Through, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify as well, it seems that GFL's major price difference was bypassing. So it may be that this particular group wasn't, isn't very well, is subcontracting it out and then getting a higher price, and maybe Clearwater has it, and that would be my suspicion.
Okay, further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Tim. Moving on to the consent agenda. What did I miss? Oh, sorry, the lagoon cleanout, sorry, my, my bad. Public Works, 2025-17, Full Lagoon Cleanout Ahead of Main Construction Contract. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives report PW 2025-17, Full Lagoon Clearout Ahead of Main Construction Contract, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry authorizes the mayor and CAO clerk to enter into an agreement with Bishop Water, Inc., to complete a full cleanout of the Alexandria Lagoon cell A, B and C for one million thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven, in accordance with Section 21.1 of the Township's Procurement Policy Bylaw 352018.
Okay, thank you. Tim.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. So even though the main construction for the lagoon hasn't started, we are already very busy. So EBB Engineering is working away on getting our final design, and we're, especially Dean and I are going across and doing a lot of the pre-work to get the, the project going. So as you may remember from a lot of Angela's wastewater reports, as the lagoon does what it does, it builds up sludge in the bottom. It's very similar to your septic tank, and the, the material that's, that's in the bottom, if your lagoons are working really well, it should, you should have a very sort of minimal buildup that general maintenance activities can go and take care of. We usually use a manual process called a sludge judge to go and figure out what our depth is of the sludge all the way through. There was a very large buildup in the air radar cells before I was director, and at some point, a lot of that was pumped from the air radar cells into the larger lagoon, I think it's cell B, in an attempt to, to get those air radars working really well. We also got a, a notice from the ministry back in 2019, I believe it was, because we had a lethality notice for the, an acute lethality notice for the effluent discharge from the lagoon. Under ice cover was giving us a large ammonia reading, which would be deadly to, to fish back several years ago. So all of this, all of these pieces coming together essentially mean that we, right now, we need to get in there and clean out all this sludge, so that the construction can proceed cleanly, and so that the federal authorities are very happy with our construction as we go forward. We had another bad year under ice cover with poor test results for ammonia, so that really put us on a warning notice with the fisheries, which is very funny, because for years and years, we've been saying, you know, give us the money for the lagoon and your problem will go away, right? So this is part of the lagoon funding, so it's not something that we need to fund extra, it's something that we took into account of. It's not something that we had a very good idea of the quantity of beforehand, so it was inbuilt into our contingency, not the extra that the feds made us take, but our actual construction estimate. So this is something that we're expecting to do. We did think there was less than, than what it turned out to be. We actually went and did a sonar scan with Complete Waters, which is a very cool job. The guy basically had a little remote control boat and zoomed around the, the lagoon, and it sonarred the bottom, which is where you get that image there. That gave us a very distinct quantity. And Bishop Water, we actually, we actually have an existing contract with them, so it's a five-year contract. I believe this would have been year three, and we were essentially, with all the information that we had, which was the sludge judge and what, how much sludge that we thought was in there, we were doing a very slow process, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, to go and remove as much sludge as we can, get on top of the problem and, and bring everything back within limits. But now that we're starting the lagoon upgrades, we need to get it all out, because we need to, to upgrade it. So that's why, so Bishop was working with us, they recommended Complete Waters to go and do the, the sonar survey. They also are the only people with the, the technology for our type of effluent sludge, so it has a high iron content, so it's not good for land application, so it needs to be taken out of the lagoon and then put into geotubes, which is basically just wrapped in fabric. Those fabrics need to overwinter in deep water, so they, all that sludge drains back out, and it drains back, the, all the water drains back into the lagoon, and then we can actually use that material as landfill cover as well. So that's, and we've got a large, we're looking for a lot of landfill cover, so it, it works out quite nicely. But this is where the timing comes in. We need to go and get this done now, not only that the lagoon construction can start, so we can get this material out of the way, so we've got a lay-down area for the, for the new contractor to come, because he's going to have all these materials, which he needs to lay out to, to start to do the construction. If we didn't have that area, we'd have to go and find somewhere else for them to do lay-down, which would cost us extra money. So it's amazing how the, the construction hasn't even started, but we're, we're really already into, into making sure that we meet that, the construction deadline, so, so we, we fully recommend that we give this to, to Bishop Water. They're already, you know, on-site, they were ramping up to do our regular program, and we think that that would be very beneficial.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kaddal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, how long does it take for the geotubes to drain out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. They have to be, they have to overwinter, so.
Over the winter?
Yeah, so you, you need to complete the dredging this summer before we start to get out, before it really freezes, it could probably frost, but it, before it properly freezes. And then that material needs to sit there, have a freeze thaw cycle, it's all like, like a very, you know, you're pulling it out of the lagoon, so it's a very clay-type material, and it's really going to expand and contract, and that will, kind of that diaphragm action really gets it out of the.
So that's, that's a great answer. Just additionally, how much to get rid of the, the sludge that's in them once they're drained? How much does it cost?
Oh, does it cost? So it's trucking. So if we were, because we have, because we're looking for landfill cover, this is actually a cost-saving for us. If we were not looking for landfill cover, we would be paying to truck this to a, it's not suitable for land, for spreading over lands, we'd actually be probably paying to truck it to GFL, and they would be disposing of it as probably hazardous soils, because it's, it's not suitable for other applications. Luckily, we have another application, and we're actually in the situ, we have in the, in the, I don't know if it's the budget exactly, but we've got a landfill liability, where we're, you know, holding this, a few million dollars on the books of landfill closure, or closure costs to actually, that we would have to pay if we weren't able to find materials. So we've actually reached out to the city of Cornwall, and we're working with the counties, that when we have projects that are done, we take those materials from those projects, and we bring them here, and we use them as landfill cover. There's a line in the budget, the MLE items, that's essentially what that is, is to, to find this material, bring it in, spread it out with a dozer, and, and, and put the capping on the Alexandria landfill, so it, but the cost would be trucking, so I think we're looking at thirty-four thousand metric tons, which I think is, oh, bone-dry tons, so I think that's about, I think it's three point four metric tons at, at tandem, you know, do the math and get it out. Our, our annual is three hundred thousand for trucking, for our, for our gravel, including materials, so I think it's about a tenth of that cost, thirty thousand dollars, I think, trucking, to truck that to the landfill.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Counselor Madden.
That was going to be one of my questions, Tim, was where we're disposing of it, and so if we're talking landfill, we're talking about this as final cover, it's kind of an ideal material for final cover, right? Which is a massive cost savings, I'm just going to say, I don't know that everybody understands that, but it's a massive cost savings. The lay-down area, we have it, or do we still need to construct it?
Through, Mr. Mayor, so we, we have to construct a, a gravel pad to sit these geotubes on, so once, so it's, again, all part of that cost, it's all being reused. Once the geotubes go away, the, the pad is there that they can use as lay-down for the contractor. So it's all, that will be part of the tender. We've got a, you know, a, a map, actually some drone footage of the, the gravel, which is, we're out there constructing it right now, because we needed to do, we will be doing the, the geotube contract with Bishop Water anyway this year, so we're constructing the pad, getting ready to go, and once the, once the geotubes and everything come in, it's really just a matter of how much dredging we're doing and. really just a matter of how much dredging we're doing and, and filling it up, right?
Yeah. I was just looking at the sizes, like, these are pretty damn big, and lots of it, so I was, it's gonna be a pretty big pad. Just a little curious about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Good job, Tim, on the report. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Items under the Consent Agenda. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives items for the Consent Agenda for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No. Just kidding. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, no notice of motion, next regular meeting of council, Monday, July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, six P M here in the council chambers. We do have a closed session coming up, but I will entertain, are there any questions for question period? Okay, thank you. So we will go into, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, maybe announce, or tell the dates for the July first celebration that are coming up this weekend?
Leslie, do you have, can you give us a quick update? I think it's-
Yes, I can. So on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at one P M, we have Glen Robertson Canada Day, and at three P M, again, on Saturday, we have Apple Hill. The both will be celebrated at the Recreation Centers. And then on Monday, June thirtieth, we have Maxwell Canada Day Celebration at the Maxwell Fairgrounds, and then on July first, we will be celebrating Canada Day in Alexandria, with the parade kicking off at noon, and then celebrations at Island Park at two P M.
Okay, perfect, busy weekend for everyone, so.
Four P M.
Going into closed session, so we'll take a two-minute break.